You are watching Access LaPorte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the July 28th meeting for the LaPorte County Council Budget Workshop. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www accesseslaporte county.org.
Good evening. I'd like to call a continuation to the Budget Workshop hearings to order. And let's go ahead and get started. Mr. Auditor, did we have a particular order for anybody that was left to do? So I'll take any volunteers, otherwise I'll start calling folks forward.
We have volunteer.
All right.
Steve.
Good evening.
I want to say 140.
143.
143, thank you.
Got it.
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
So when we last met, there was a few questions, concerns. We were talking about various 200 and 300 accounts who were going back to recalculate some stuff. Is there anything that you were looking at in terms of new rates proposals?
Tell us what you want, and then we'll all discuss whatever you want.
So if we recap, basically, the request is the same as what you've had last year and the previous, pretty close to the previous year, minus a few things.
And the year before that, and the year before that. Hasn't changed since 2018.
Okay. Can I entertain any questions or thoughts from the council?
Mr. President.
Mr. Yagalski.
Thank you. I know we've talked about this with the GIS. We've had the meetings coming up there. I don't know if it's too soon to, by next meeting, we should be able to get, have a meeting, we should be able to bring the people in, figure out how we divide the pay up. In other words, whether, like, commissioners have economic development, so on and so forth, and the auditor, and the people that are going to utilize them the most. We threw that out there, but this is here, I think, that we need to put that into some kind of a number system that the other departments can help pay for the, so what we're going to do is, we're going to have a meeting to get the different departments, and you were on it, right?
I was on it on Friday.
So you're familiar with it?
Yeah, with what we're looking at.
And they're going to make a pie chart that kind of equals itself out?
Yep, that makes sense to me. Now, I would presume that we were looking at doing this all through general fund budgets for the individual departments, or, and I'm getting a, I'm getting a head shake over here from Darlene.
Yeah. So the plan is that, like, every department that uses it sometimes has other, not every department, but like with economic development, we could use the economic development lit to pay the commissioners' portion. We can use the reassessment fund. Mike has agreed that we could use his fund for the initial study to come up with everything that we need to do.
So it's not necessarily general fund?
Yeah, it wouldn't be general.
Could be whatever funds.
There may be some, but, you know, depending, if the other departments have the other fees, like 911 said they can't pay toward salary or anything like that, but they could pay toward hardware, because there's a lot of upgrades that are going to need to be done.
And contracts.
So.
Multiple departments.
Yeah, so if we can get each department to put in, you know, their amount, then out of their other funds, then it will be less of a strain on the general fund.
Okay, and this is just to create accountability to the different utilizing departments? Not so much that I work only for the Board of Commissioners or the Assessor's Office, it's to allow for that reporting structure and that serving structure, is that correct?
Yes.
Right now, there's at least seven different departments that utilize the GIS software. And one of the things that the study was going to break out, it was, the study is actually going to search everybody's databases, what software each one of these departments utilizes, see if we can use those databases as collection, so we can save a lot of time and effort. But also, by doing that, we'll also get an idea of what the usage is by every department, and therefore allocate a share of who should be paying what share. And right now, we, you know, we can say 1/7, but that doesn't work, because some departments obviously use it a lot more than others, so we're trying to get it to where it's a point where it's a better allocation, and the only way to do that is through the study.
And all seven of these departments are good with this?
Well, we don't know. There could be more than seven.
No, but the seven, the seven, evidently somebody's identified seven.
Right.
So far, those are all like, yeah, sure, no problem.
Well, but we do have some departments that don't have funds coming in, and that would be like voter registration. We need the maps done. And so that's not a department that we would ask them to come up with any kind of a share on it. So as we do this study, even though the study may give us, like, different fractions of who's using what, there may be some that won't be able to contribute, and we might ask some people to contribute a little bit more.
So question, isn't voter registration a subset of the clerk's office?
It is not. It's freestanding, it's its own.
And those elections, so why wouldn't you be part of the clerk?
Because wasn't there a ruling back in 2021 or 2022? Mr. Keel, could you help me on this one? Wasn't there some kind of a ruling where they separated the two?
I don't remember if there was a ruling, or, but I know that they've been separate for quite some time, and it's been discussed previously.
Yes.
I think it requires a change in statute in order to put it underneath the clerk's office.
We had actually, I think, looked at doing that at one time when there was an issue with employees. I wasn't going to say it.
I'll say it.
When there was an issue.
Thanks, Mark.
And we looked into it, and it would take, it's not say you can't, but I think it would take.
I think that they had either upped or lowered the number, because it was based on population. And again, I don't remember all the exact facts of it, but it was based on the population, we're a town of 110. I don't know where we'd have to, we could probably ask our attorney to look at that, but again, I don't, I don't see the purpose of going into that. The bottom line is, we're talking about GIS, and we're looking at everyone pitching in and what departments are using it. So it's more about, if we have a department that has a need, and they're not able to contribute, it wouldn't stop them from being able to have their needs fulfilled. It would just, you know, the departments that would be able to help out, let them help. And again, on the commissioners, we have the economic lit.
And the voter registration use of him, I don't think will be consistent and far-ranging from year to year, because once they get everything established, we only change districts every, what, 10 years? So once they're established, they're set.
No, not necessarily, because then, as people move around, you know, those numbers will change.
Well, the district will change.
Right. So, and then the plan is, and I'm going to come to you guys tonight at the council meeting for permission to spend, just to get the study done out of reassessment. I don't know if it has to be appropriated or not, but then what we would end up doing is, so there's a lot of data out there that not everybody shares. So like highways entering on their side, the ditches and the culverts and GPS locating them, where that would also benefit, you know, real estate, or, you know, somebody else. 911 just had all their road center lines stuff done, which would help to put it in our GIS on our side, so that it would kind of straighten up the parcel lines a little bit.
He says it does not need to be appropriated. Mike said the funds do not need to be appropriated.
For that, for the assessment, we just need permission to spend. Don't even need that.
Just to kind of get ahead of things, and this isn't necessarily a council issue, but if there's seven departments paying into this.
There may be more.
Or more, I'll leave it, or more. If we need to find a new GIS person, who, do the commissioners appoint them, and everybody's paying in, or is it, all these people are going to be on a board and have a say-so in it, or how are you going to?
So we do have, Mike, Mike, you want to come up here? We had talked about this, and we do have to get it under a board, and that was the suggestion originally from Mark Yagalski, that we go ahead, we get the board. When we did the hiring, we did ask everybody that was participating at that time, you know, to come to the meeting for the interviews and everything else. So moving forward, hopefully before the end of the year, we would have to establish that board and make sure that everybody that is using it is being represented.
With minutes.
I think this first year is going to be sort of like a learning curve until we get everything established with.
No.
Mr. Chairman.
Just because I.
Can I say something?
Yeah, absolutely.
This isn't a new concept. We did it when I was the auditor. There were E-911, Mike, the auditor, the building commission, I think IT, the election board, voters, we all used, and the sheriff's department also, all used GIS, and we all, we all participated in.
Myself.
Yeah, so it's nothing new.
So why just?
And you.
Well, you really want to know?
Well.
I'm just kidding.
Because the administration changed.
You don't want to know the story.
It's time limited.
Yeah.
We've only got an hour here, folks.
All right.
So one last question. We usually only see maybe one split, maybe two splits to a salary across multiple different accounts. Is this potential of up to, upwards of seven different accounts going to be a problem from the auditor's process?
Salary is very difficult to be split amongst different departments. That's why it's best kept under one, as we have it now, and the commissioners.
So are we looking to?
You can, you certainly can have a board meeting of any group and have them represent and to select that person if they need to select another one, but right now, you're good, because you have one, but.
So then, at the beginning of the year, would we transfer to, into this account in the, from all these, let's say, seven or more?
Well, we're playing, the idea, the concept that we were all trying to bring is not to use general funds for the other expenses, but the salary should be kind of kept right where it is, where general fund has to pick up the salary.
And then we just need to make transfers.
Make transfers, or are we appropriating from the different departments into a GIS account?
Well, but with the exception of the departments, like, say, 911, where they cannot, they can't, from their fund, again, someone can correct me if I'm wrong, but from the 911 fund, you can't put that towards salaries. So we would, we would have, like, a yearly contract where we have to get the upgrades of the computer. Maybe that would be a contract, or that would be going towards the, you know, their share would go towards something like that versus salary. You know, just to be honest, so everyone knows ahead, we don't say, well, we thought that everyone was going to give a free, a fair portion. There are going to be some departments where this is part of, like, why we're going to have to have a meeting within the next month or so.
It's all got to get worked out.
We do. There's a lot of kinks still in it.
Mr. Yagalski.
One of the things that, in case a department can't do that, you can always then use it for the software or whatever, but there's not a lot of cost, once you get the initial, once he has his lab, his computers, which he just received. Thanks, Mike.
Oh, anytime.
Yeah.
But there's, there's not, there's not a lot of extra cost that's going to happen.
So if a department like 911 was put in, he has those big platters and papers, things like that, there's plenty of money that we can ask instead of the salary.
Okay.
Right, and there's going to be a cost initially to get everything upgraded and, you know, licensing correcting, correct, and, you know, so we can combine all the data and get it all in one place. So we are kind of talking about that also, when we're talking about splitting that up.
Okay.
Okay, so we're done with that, on the same conversation. We need to, I guess, work with the commissioners on this idea of people travel. I mean, I like the idea that we did, we put it all underneath the commissioners, but there was some question this year about who could or could not travel. I'm just bringing it up, because we didn't, we really didn't finish that conversation during our budget hearings.
So you're talking about account 30027?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we've already had, at least to my recollection, two, if not three, different departments come to us with new line items for employee education and training. So far, we're seeing 13, roughly 13,000 expended out of a $20,000 budget. Do we split that? Do we?
Again, you know, this thing, when you do something, when we finally get to some point where we do something and it works really well, there's just some question here about who's not going, who's going. We, it hasn't happened in the past, so we got issues now. So I believe it should go on to commissioners, in my opinion. I think that it works successfully, but if there's, if we have something, if we have to work something out that they need something more help with, I'd be glad to help out with it, but I don't know. Question is, I like to keep it where it's at, in my, in my opinion.
Okay.
That's why I'm bringing it up.
Realistically, you know, fundamentally, if you divide it too many different ways, those, each of those pie pieces end up growing, and then they all get expended.
That's the reason we've decided, we've been looking at qualifications for travel. I mean, just to go because you want to go somewhere, or a vendor does not qualify as education, credit hours, or sometimes they have multiple meetings of the same thing at two different parts of the state, there's no reason for me to go to both if it's the same thing.
We did have some individuals sign up for events. We signed off on it, and then they didn't show up. And so we're waiting to see if it shows up on the credit card, if we got stuck with, with at least the registration fees, maybe the hotels may have been canceled, but if the registration was paid, we may have gotten stuck with that. Like he said, we have conferences where sometimes it's held up in the north and then down in the south, and then they want to go to both. Again, I think that, you know, when you're looking at us already using 13,000 of the 20,000 that's allocated, and we have a really big event coming up, AIC, and that's when all the commissioners, all the council, and a lot of the elected officials go to, that 7,000 is going to be eaten up right away. I don't have a problem with just stopping the whole thing, let everybody go wherever they want to go, but then the council just has to be able to accommodate us with the fund, raise it up to 30,000, and we let everyone go wherever they want to go.
Well, now, that's not really being response.
There's also, in January, when I go down session, I'm going to suggest to them that maybe instead of all these far-flung meetings everywhere across the state, we just do them all online. That way, we can stay here at our offices and saves a lot of money for the, because hotel rooms and travel and everything else are getting expensive, and as the auditors knows, the reimbursement, we're still working on reimbursement things.
Good luck, AIC is a.
I know, I know, they like to, they like to see this.
They thrive in this, so good luck on that.
You want me to sit at the table? Yes, please. I'm going to voice my concern on that. If you want to tell your department heads if they can go or not, but you should not be telling an elected official what they can do and can't do with their staff. If it's in their budget to travel, and they're following the rules that you guys set, there shouldn't be anything where you say, no, you can't go, because the best judge of the conference is the elected official. But if you want to control your department heads, who gets to go? I don't have a problem with that, but I don't think you should be telling the council and the department, or the elected officials what they can and can't do, as far as education.
But I think they can tell elected officials, just kind of check things to make sure that it's a necessity and not.
Well, where does the expertise come, where they can say, yes, you can, or no, you can't?
I agree.
Because at times, politics gets into it.
I'm on the same, I agree.
Well.
I'm just saying, all elected officials just need to be mindful that we are under a budget crunch, and, you know, make sure they're required, or they're a necessity.
Realistically, budget crunch or not, we should be.
Right, but that's where maybe they need to tighten up the travel, what you can and can't do. I mean, to this day, we're still in the dark of how much we get if we go on a per diem, or do you get this, or you get that for breakfast? We still don't know that. We've discussed that for months.
The other, the other thing is, do you need to send, and I'm exaggerating, seven people down there to go to the same conference? Can you send somebody down there to come back and share it with others? There isn't one ounce, I'll take that back, there's very little information, when people go to conference, that comes back, that somebody stands up and goes, this is what was at conferences, what we learned, this and that. Short of maybe Justin, when he goes to, you know, NERPC or one of his other things, he might mention things, but when people come back from conference, they're, they're not like sharing it with the other, I don't see it. I'm just telling you.
Yep, but you're talking more like AIC, kind of the general, because like, if you talk about an assessor conference, at one time, there might be six or seven different classes. And of course, we get, we get hours for, so that's, that's a little different. But if you're talking AIC, they're mostly general classes to where everybody, but a lot of the things when you go to conferences, just consider networking. You discuss with others, what are you guys doing, or what aren't you doing, and blah, blah, blah. So I can understand that, but I think we need to be a little bit more specific on what we can do when we travel. We're still in the dark on what we're paying and what we're not paying, and what you can and you can't do.
So any interest in time, and knowing that there's some clarifications we need to make to the, how we tried to update the ordinance in the first of the year, and how the ordinance reads, and what spaces can be updated easily and what ones don't exist. I'm going to hold that off right now, because we're talking about $20,000, $20,100 that were budgeted last year, and it's the same request for this year. What's the council?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Before you start, you're missing the point. First of all, any, any department or any elected official knows or should know that every meeting or conference we have to attend is state-called. The State Board of Accounts will always send you a letter and say, this is a state-called meeting. Secondly, we all get continuing education points now, or scores, because we have to, that's a statute now, that we all have to have continuing education hours. Third, instead of putting money into each account or each location, it would be better to take your county elected officials' fund and make that a separate fund that is controlled through the commissioner's office. And when someone goes, they have to have their state-called letter, because you get letters, you have to have your signed copy of permission to go from the commissioners, and then we would take it out of the county elected officials' fund, which comes from the recorder's office, doesn't hurt the general fund at all. So the places, the times that, the times that it's going to hurt your general fund is when you have people that go frivolously, like they were just saying.
Vendors.
You can't, the state says that you can take, you can, like, in our office, the elected official, the chief deputy, and two other staff members can go with you. Now, when you're talking about AIC, that's not state-called, that's called by the Association of Indiana Counties. So is that something that we all need to be going to? I don't know. You're going to have to look at it, but they always send an agenda, so you know what you can attend, what you can't attend. Every association, like the auditors, the assessors, the commissioners, the county has, council has an association, those meetings are about maybe an hour to two hours. Is it really worth spending all that money to go down there? And most times, what happens is, and whether they like me saying this or not, most time it's a vendor who's going to wine and dine you, and that's why you go. You go to, you know, so the vendors can schmooze you, kind of.
We actually had an event where someone signed up for it, didn't go to the event, but went in the evening for the dinner.
Yeah.
And they signed up for it. And I'm not going to, I'm not here to call anyone out, but we know that factually, we know that factually. But here's another thing, as we're talking this through, one of the things that came to me right now is, when we look at every elected official, we can't say, well, this is, you know, we almost need a list, because everyone says, well, I need X amount of hours for completion every single year. What is that, what is that number? What is?
It comes from the AIC.
And if they hit it, they should stop going. I mean.
State tells you what to do.
I get things from county commissioners that go towards my credit hours. I can't find any place that says I have to have any kind of credit hours at all, so.
So like, is there, like?
Do you have no credit?
State Board of Accounts.
So we have to get, you know, so.
Yeah, I'm writing that down right now.
We have to ask the State Board of Accounts, each single elected official or department, how many hours are required for them to complete by the end of the year? And then this would give us a good tell-all of, you know, how many, how many events should they be going to per year? And then once we have a better feel, it doesn't matter who's in that position, these are the hours that they need, so we need to make sure that when they're signing up for these events, that they're getting the hours that they need. Another thing is, like, besides knowing the hours, when folks sign up for something, and again, I'm just talking out loud, how, what would be, you know, is it possible that if you sign up for something, you have to go to it? If you don't go to it, then you reimburse the county, because this isn't county money, this is taxpayers' money.
Right, unless somebody came to the commissioners prior to it, saying there was an emergency, I couldn't, I can't go.
Just to move along, we're 30 minutes into this already.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. There is one closing comment I'd like to add to this, though.
All right.
Very briefly, I feel that we're trying to squeeze too much efficiency out of one thing here. I mean, we've, we've spent a fair amount of time talking about this item, and I think it's difficult to quantify what exactly is the right amount of efficiency and the right amount of value that we're supposed to be getting out of education. Just as one, not totally transferable example, but I remember when I was on town council in McCross, I went to a training that was a Pacer road scoring training that was put on by Indot in Winnimack, and I submitted for mileage for that. And that, going to that training allowed me to do the scoring for the town for the next, I don't know, I've probably been doing it seven or eight years now, and that saved them tens of thousands of dollars over that time period. So 40 bucks a mileage for them has saved thousands in the long run. And so I think it might be better for us to look at this and ask, rather than, is this required, and that's purely the only reason that you're allowed to go, ask, what are we going to get out of it? What are you going to train to your staff? Make them give a report afterwards, write a summary. If they're willing to do that work, and they think it's valuable, and it's going to enhance their, their craft, then we should spend the money on it. This $20,000.
You're not sending everybody, you're just sending one person to bring that information back.
Sure, or send the people you need to send in order to share it effectively, if there's multiple sessions going on at the same time or whatever. But this is $20,000 out of a county that has probably a throughput of $110 million. This is just so small. We'd be better to focus our time and energy on something like our insurance, where if we were to save 1% of our insurance costs, that's $120,000 from one thing. I hate to just pick on employee education and training when it has the potential to make us more efficient and make our employees better.
Fair enough. With that, I would recommend if we're going to do any kind of revamping, that we move along into more of a workshop than it is to how we do it. So, budget-wise, any other questions, concerns, recommendations from the council?
On, on the commissioner's budget, I want to make sure that, like, some of these items are as close to what you think you're going to need, and I know that may not be a universally-held opinion, but like, things like employee life insurance, if that number is accurate, great. If it's not, and you think that it needs to increase for next year, I personally would prefer to know during the budget process, as opposed to when we get to additional appropriations sometime next year.
For, for all the years that I've been watching, and this year I get to go through the process, I don't think the majority of the time, there's ever been the right dollar amounts put in most of budget, and that's why there's always additional appropriations.
Could you reach out to the vendor that does the life insurance and see, I think we talked about this?
They'll go through HR.
See what that number is, so that.
I mean, feel free to, you know, drive a hard bargain with them, and, you know, get the price down, but if we're looking at our bills and we're going, oh, shoot, you know, we spend, it's budgeted for 211,000, if we're spending 250 already, you know, we might as well make the number right.
We had this discussion years ago with the police cars for the budget, years ago. That was, that was a big topic for quite a few, a couple of years.
That's always come out of a fund, but.
Just, just to, one thing, Mr. President, maintenance contracts, you got $650 in there for the last three years, you haven't spent anything in '24, you didn't spend anything this year. What is, that $650 in there for? 30007.
Isn't that for the?
Maintenance contracts.
We have, it was for the part-time ESO officer for his license, that he needed to do work for the veterans in Michigan City. That would usually be about $450 maybe, and that's.
Maintenance, that's under maintenance contract?
I would take it out there, because we had no other place to take it out of.
But it doesn't look like it's been taken out of for the last two years.
Because we haven't had a part-time.
Haven't had a part-time, right.
Okay.
And currently, right now, someone. And currently, right now, someone from the federal level has reached out and is going to put someone into Michigan City VSO officer and no cost does to, that way we wouldn't even have to have that part-time officer anymore.
So are you good for zero?
What's that?
Are you good to zero that out?
If we're not going to use it for anything.
Well, we're saving money now.
And if something changes from the end of the year.
Come back.
Always come back.
Every, every, I mean, a dollar's a dollar.
All right.
Real quick, Mr. Yagowski, official bonds. We have other departments that have it too. I know you, is that for other departments or just?
We pay for the bonds for all the elected officials. So every elected official that doesn't have it in their budgets, like we pay for the survey or the assessor, the auditor.
There's, there's, weren't there bonds in a couple of budgets?
That's what I'm asking.
But as far as I've seen, we, we pay all of them for everybody.
No, there's, there's, there's departments that have.
I can't remember which one it was.
Any other?
There was. We talked about it.
I think there was, but I can't. The only place that said bond was from bonding.
Was it a?
I haven't questioned it.
Was it?
Elected officials bond.
Elected officials.
Why don't you come over here?
There was, there was one in the accounts. I know there was.
Is it a clerk's?
A small amount.
Is it a clerk's?
The only, the only bond that I know of was the assessors. And I don't know, did we combine yours with the commissioner's now? Or you pay, pay your own bond?
They, they pay.
There are.
That's why I was asking.
They pay for every elected official.
Hang on one second. He's got it.
So I have the whole thing digitized here. So there's one that's bond payment, obviously not the same.
Whose department?
That was lit economic development bond, so.
That's not.
And juvenile services had insurance bond for $25.
It's not the same thing.
Not the same thing. So I think they are consolidated.
All right. Yep. Just thank you.
So they don't need to know now? Okay.
All right.
Hold it over.
No more? All right, then we'll hold it over until we go to the 100s. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So this passed.
I wouldn't go that far. It's, it's looking good. It's looking good, but it's, I wouldn't say it bad.
You were down pretty well. I felt good.
All right. So the last time we met, there were a lot of ad hoc changes made at the moment.
Should happen.
At least, at least at the, at the right side of the table over here.
That's correct.
From the center and left, there might've been a lot of shocked looks and faces.
They should all be in there now.
This is updated.
Everything should be updated and correct. I went through it today and it looks to be accurate. So if you have any questions.
Check at 3:30.
If you have any questions, I'd be happy to explain what we did and why we did what we did.
And the auditor, Mr. Rosenbaum brought down updated figures because out of my reassessment, reassessment pays for the, the taxes and insurance and stuff. So he brought down the updated, added about 5,000 to that, but those are correct numbers. Because usually we just wait to the end and they, payroll will say you're in the red on insurance or in the, so we just, comes out of another fund, but he actually brought it up to date, so that's an accurate amount. And there is a savings overall of $20,093.
You should be looking at the 2015 reassessment fund.
Yep. Yep. I'm just looking here. I see that there was a new line item created, but it's zeroed out for the postage Michigan Township 30002 out of 2015.
That was in the general.
Numerically, it doesn't really do anything. I'm just kind of curious as to why the new line item.
The postage, the one, the second postage account?
Yes.
There wasn't any amount given. So it, we just left that line there.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, I know that.
It can come out at any point in time.
Okay. So what we tried to do is we tried to make things pretty simple because this process seems to be really overwhelming and convoluted and I'm not really sure why that is. Okay? So what we tried to do is keep the general fund just to have salaries for Michigan Township. And we created a different fund last year that we could take money out of the sales disclosure fund that we collect money from. The auditor's office puts money into that as well. So what we tried to do is move things around so that it's easier to follow and it's not as wonky, for lack of a better term, because we were pulling out of three different funds. We were trying to avoid all that. So when you see that, the Michigan Township postage was taken out of the general fund. Well, we just want to move that money and take it out of reassessment. So there should have definitely been a figure in there.
And they have their own line items, so it's transparent. You'll see what they spend and what we spend.
Is there a suggested amount because I don't have it?
Michigan Township postage should be $5,600.
I have that in there.
That's, and I was going to say that's on the sheet that I printed out of Lyle this morning.
Okay. So the sheet I gave you does not have it. It's an error on my part because I ran a, a report trying to duplicate everything and I missed that number.
30002 should be.
Should have 5,600.
Yes. Correct.
You have two.
Yeah.
There are two entries. Yeah, 20,350, 600. Is that what you have?
5,600.
Okay. Gotcha.
What do you have as a total?
So.
When it's separated.
That goes.
808,000.
Right, Stacy.
Yes.
5600.
Correct.
Thank you.
So on, just out of curiosity, catch me up here. Run 109.
That's okay.
Correct? No?
General, that's a general.
General. But you said a savings of about 20,000. That's 80, it's a difference from last year to this year of $8,600. Am I missing something? You're saying 20.
What is?
So, so.
I think it's everything.
Correct. So actually.
Other accounts too. Is that?
The 20,000 is combined because we actually removed quite a bit of money out of what we're going to be spending on stuff from the reassessment fund. The general fund is actually just more of stuff being transferred to either the reassessment fund or the sales disclosure fund. $2,700.
The general fund is $2,700 savings. The rest of it comes out of, the savings comes out of the reassessment, which are
Should I have a sheet, a new sheet for 109? Because I have.
I got one today.
Yeah.
But I had my book left here. Did you leave your book?
It was a set of four sheets.
I have.
Left on your place.
102. I have 815.
815 is the 2015 reassessment fund.
Which is two pages long.
Yep.
And then I have the sales disclosure.
If you had, if you had to put, book here, they put all dollars in.
Yeah, well, they give you a new ones and I don't have it.
That's the right end, the 2015 reassessment.
The sales disclosure fund, we get $10 now for every sales disclosure that is filed. So.
I left my book here.
There was $112,000 in there.
You didn't even see it?
We sold some more sales.
So if you were to take all of the changes that you made across all your different funds, did it increase the total or decrease the total or stay the same across all of your different funds?
It doesn't fund when.
It decreased it.
Decreased it.
Yeah, decreased the tax ones, but it probably increased our expenditures out of the sales.
That's correct.
So it crossed all three. What was the net change?
The general fund was 20,000. Got that right? That's the general fund.
I'm not sure.
The 108. Yeah, that was what they.
I'm missing that. Increase?
Decrease.
Decrease. Gotcha. Thank you.
Troy or Mike, could you, at this meeting, I know you can't do it right away, but could you let us know by next meeting if you can, how much money gets returned back to the Yeah. Yes, please.
And lately, and Justin had caught it, but the, the Department of Local Government Finance, when they're cutting, they tend to like to cut into the reassessment fund. But we have, I think, a fairly healthy operating balance out of there after our budget and all that. But we've, we've never asked for an additional appropriation out of it, just what's always been budgeted. But the state, they, they tend to go after that a little if they need to cut some. So, but because we have a healthy operating balance, they'll probably cut it again if we need it.
And that brings up a good point. During the 1782 notice process, we can advise them where we want them to make those cuts too. So it's, we can change it if we want to preserve certain funds and push those cuts into a different place. We could do that.
Hold it over or approve it?
Hold it up to the council. Anybody have any further questions, recommendations? Shall we hold it over? We'll just hold over 200s and 300s. Not going to approve, not going to deny. We've got the information we've got and I think.
Well, somebody wants to make a motion to approve it. Tues and threes.
We've got lots of silence.
I'll make a motion to approve the twos and threes. You got it?
All right. We have a motion by Mr. Yagowski to approve twos and threes. Second. Now, the question is, is it for 109, 2015 reassessment and the sales disclosure?
That's fine. Is that what you want?
It's whatever you want. You're making the motion, I'm not going to put words in your mouth, sir.
And what about Michigan Township assessor?
I would include the Michigan Township.
Completely, sir.
You're the one making the motion.
We did that already?
Michigan Township.
They like to add on the Michigan Township.
All right. So assessor, so 109, 2015 reassessment, sales disclosure, Michigan Township. You good with that?
Yep.
Any further discussion? All in favor of approving twos and threes? Most signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
I'm sorry if this was said earlier, but in 109, where was the, which line item had the change in it? Just so I can update my spreadsheet here.
It's changed their minds.
And I'm, I'm missing the 109 updated sheet, so I, I don't know.
Well, there was a couple of changes in the 109 between Michigan Township and the county. So do you want me to come up there and show you? Do you want me?
Tell you what, it might be easier. Would you?
Change this to this, this.
Perfect. Okay.
If not, you can email me and I can send it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Whatever's easier. Sure thing. Thank you.
All right. So at this point, ask for Mr. Surveyor. It's joining us quickly. Somebody interesting.
I'm saving money.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks. Thank you for your donation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So.
I believe you have copies of the quote from Saylor Land Surveying.
Yep.
If not, I have additional copies here.
There we go. So this actually has more to do with current year and not next year.
Yes, this is for current services and in order to, yeah, I need to ask for an additional amount beyond the 30,000 I requested last year to cover the additional number of, of markers that we have in our inventory.
How many, how many are there?
The total, the total is 2745 that we found. There's about 350 that have never been located. So that's going to be an ongoing effort to identify some of those that have never been found in the 200 years since they've been put out.
2745.
That's the second figure on there. $500 would be for each one of those markers that we find and essentially reestablish in our inventory. But our current inventory is 2745 and we need to do 5% of that a year.
All right. So it's 125 roughly?
So it's $300 a pop. How many do you have this year that we're going to pay for?
Um, at this moment, we have 42 identified and we hope to get 130.
42.
Right.
42 right this instant that are ready to go.
138.
What date do those have to be done by? End of the year?
By the end of the year.
630.
And we probably need to get about 135 done by the end of the year.
And he's, he's willing, careful, careful.
Right. Don't hurt.
He's willing to do it again next year? I mean, what do we have?
I would assume so. Yes.
I can't walk up.
To be fair, the surveyor just got this today and dealing with the thing that's right in front of him first.
Yeah.
Exactly. So as we're looking at it right now, I'm assuming we're looking at line item 30120 in the corner perpetuation fund, that amount of $39,020. That, so as I look at it, presuming you had all of the reports written for the 137 that we have to do a year, that's 5% of the 2745, that would be 41,175. Realistically, we're looking more, and it's going to be some number higher than that or just under that because it gave me a fraction, but realistically, you're looking at probably 50/50 at $300 a pop where you have the reports done and $500 apiece for the ones where he's actually locating, correct?
That would be a smaller number, probably, I would assume maybe a dozen. We would be able to locate, they're hard to find. They're extremely hard to find. That's why they're, you know, essentially in our inventory of never found monuments. We, we have 2745 that are located that we go in and verify that they're still in existence, that they're still in good condition, recondition them if necessary. And that would be, the $300 figure would be for 5% of that number. $300 figure would be for 5% of that number. And how many we are able to find, there's a reason they're unfound, is because there essentially no records of where they are. We know in general where they are, but back 200 years ago when these were placed, measurement systems were not quite as accurate as they are today.
Without getting too far into the details of it, this is, at this point, we're looking at, you know, upwards of $44,000 right now, just to cover what we need for this year.
Right, to get...
So, I mean, what do we want to do for future years, folks?
Real quick question. Auditor, Mr. Auditor, what is, what is, where's his salary at on this page? Is it...
His salary?
Yeah.
It's a combination of three things. It's approximately $27,600 is the base, and then he gets two different amounts for the corners.
Okay.
It's a set.
That's okay. So, what's the difference between this year and last year when we had, we had an actual surveyor? That's what I'm trying to figure out here.
It's 40,000 was the set amount for the other surveyor, and so the difference is the 12,200 approximately, 12,400.
I think we addressed that at the last meeting. We adjusted the amount budgeted for salary to 29,000.
Where is it?
Yeah, that's...
I have it down at 27,800 is what I have down, but...
27,800?
Yeah, but I, we can check with the, we can double-check what that number is, and we can have that when we're ready for the end of the month.
Then he gets his add-on, so it brings him right back up to 40, is what, that's why I scratched out the 29,000.
We need to clear that up again.
Yeah, but we're now, let's...
I'll get a more solid number before the end of the month.
Too much on 100s right now. I guess realistically, what are we going to do? We're going back to the perpetuation fund, going back to the last line, 30120. If I take 137 markers times 500, that's going to be $69,000.
Times 400?
Times 500. That's presuming that he, that we contract a surveyor to actually do all of the corners out there.
But why are you...
Records of reference.
Why are you doing 500?
These are special ones that have records. So, these, so these are, there are no records of it. These are, if there's monuments where they know they are.
Mr. President, are you trying to say you're trying to catch them? Because these, a lot of these, like you said, it's been going on for many, many years. The last 10 surveyors did not get all of them, so is that a realistic number you have? No, I'm asking, I'm asking...
No, I'm more along the lines of just trying to get a better understanding of what we're going to do for a plan, because at this point, we're in, under the current staffing of the surveyor's office, right, they're not able to support what it takes to write official reports for monuments. We're going to need to have a contractor involved. What, what is the magic number in terms of being able to staff it in order to get the work done?
135 at 300 a pop, which is what he estimates for ones that have been located previously, would be $40,500. If you want to throw in a few new ones that were previously unlocated, 42,000 or something?
In the first place, because we've already said there's going to be almost 35,000 in savings from the salaries alone, so why would we not want to put it in that way? Because even the previous contracted stuff out, he did not do all the work, you know, so there's actually more savings than that, to be honest with you.
Savings himself?
In prior years, fewer than a dozen new markers were found, fewer than a dozen new markers were found. So, I don't think we would get more than a dozen or so of the never-found.
Right. Which accounts are you looking to see that we're going to save in the salaries?
Were you saying we're going to save 30,000?
His salary and the previous is a savings. So, what, from last year's budget to this year's budget, so we're going to have to pay for that difference one way or the other, so it's really, that's just, it's...
So, real quick, Mr. Auditor, what is his, what is his current salary with everything added on?
He still gets the bonus.
Okay, sorry.
Ballpark.
Ballpark, about 36, 37,000.
I'm looking at 10111 is 40,202. I see surveyor section corner reference. I'm assuming that's the other one of the two bonuses, and that's 5876. And then I have surveyor certificate of drains, and that's 1742. Grand total of 47820.
So, it should be the 27,800 that I mentioned plus those two, 5876 and the 1742.
29.
So, the top number should be 27,800.
He doesn't get the 40,000, he gets 29.
Right, what we talked about for this year.
I'll confirm the number, but assume it's the 27,800 for now.
We can revisit the 100s later, but to address the contracted amount under the surveyor's corner perpetuation fund, presently, it's budgeted at $39,020. If Mr. Sailor keeps his rates the same going forward, we would need at least 42,000 to be safe. That gives a little bit of extra for some undiscovered markers. Would you feel comfortable with that number?
I would feel comfortable with that, yes.
So, let's go ahead and make that 42, and then you can come back to us here soon with an updated, well, this is for this year. Come back for one that's for next year as well, and we'll address that then when you get here. In the meantime, we'll operate under that, because that seems like a safe starting point.
What, go ahead.
And then as far as this year's matter, you should talk to the auditor's office about scheduling and advertising and additional appropriation, and then we can address that at our next council meeting.
All right. Yes.
Good.
I'm okay with it.
Do you have to have someone sign off if, Tim, I think his name is, does a center line, does a certified surveyor have to sign off on that?
I've never considered the center line. You mean a center line in a road?
When they do a road, anytime they're paving a road, we have to establish center line.
I don't believe that we've ever been involved in that. I could be wrong, because I'm new here.
I'm pretty sure that, pretty sure you guys, my question is, is does a surveyor, a certified licensed surveyor?
Yes.
Need to sign off on that also, because that's not referenced in this with Sailor?
Yeah.
And I don't have to check into that. I don't know if that needs to be a registered surveyor.
So, any county road that's getting paved, the center lines have to be established?
Correct.
So, that's what I'm...
I think it would be not be a surveyor, because, you know, it's not rockets, I had to assume. If it's messed up, it's going to be our own fault, not the state's.
Some of the contractors have their own surveyors working on projects, so that's where I would need to find out.
I believe it goes through, the highway department has this county surveyor.
County roads.
Yeah. Just saying.
And Indiana Code has many places where the county surveyor is supposed to be doing a function that is not being done here in La Porte. They have other people taking care of it.
That's another matter for another...
I just want to say one last thing. I think we're in, coming up on August, and you're just now getting a price to have someone sign off on eight months worth of work. This should have been done way ahead of time. We should have had that price a long time ago, so that it was being done correctly.
Mr. Masterson is able to...
But yes, and I'll get a quote for next year, so we get that straightened out, but I'm pretty sure that this would be applicable for 2024, and I'll get it in writing that it's...
You know what I mean?
So, that Mr. Masterson has good marching orders when he goes down here today. He already has funds that are appropriated for this sort of work, so he can proceed[1666.43]